Was called to order at 6:05 PM. Pastor Greg, if you could help us out with the invocation today. And we will be led... In the pledge of allegiance by recent councilwoman Olivia Valentine, please.
Bow your heads, please. Father God, what a wonderful privilege it is to come before you and publicly thank you for the great city that we have. We have peace here. We have security. Father, thank you. There's lots of other cities around us that are having a lot of trouble, and our city is very, very quiet and peaceful and well-maintained. So, we're grateful for that, and I want to say thank you. God, you're an awesome father. We have a wonderful city. We have a civic group and a civic organization and civic relationships that are really, really fine here, and I'm grateful for it. So, we ask you to bless the city council and everybody on it. They do a lot of hard work, pray for the city attorney's office, the police department, the police chief, and all those people who make the city work well. We also want to lift up the business people, Father, who are doing their best to bring goods and services into our community at good, fair prices. God, thank you for that. Thank you for all the availability we have of credit and food and gasoline and all those things that many, many other countries and cities don't have. So, we're grateful, and we just want to say thanks publicly for all the good that we have here. And I ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, the Republic of America, for which it stands. Nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for being here today. Today's probably going to be a short meeting, just depending what we all do up here, right? Okay, let's just get to the point. Let's try to be efficient and get to work, okay? So, roll call, please.
Councilmember Manning, here. Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Patterson. Mayor Protem Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Vargas.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Our first presentation, I'd like to call Director Akbar Faroki and Assistant Engineer Torado to the podium. Presentation for One Way Street Angled Parking Pilot Program.
Mr. Mayor, if I can introduce this presentation, please?
Oh, okay. Sorry, City Manager.
No problem. Thank you for your consideration. During the construction of City Hall Expansion and Civic Center project, both visitors and employees will be affected by change in parking. In the initial phase, the existing parking lot and the B of A Parking Lot, Bank of America Parcel, will be demolished, impacting parking in the current parking lot. To address parking concerns, one-way angled street parking on 126th Street will be implemented temporarily. This measure aims to compact parking issues during construction and after the project is completed. Periodic studies will be conducted to assess the impact of traffic. If these studies reveal negative effects and the city council approves 126th Street, may be converted back to a two-way street. With that, I'd like to introduce DJ, one of our engineers for the city of Hawthorne. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, Honorable Mayor, councilpeople, and city of Hawthorne residents. My name is DJ Torado. I'm the Assistant Engineer with the Public Works Department, and I will be doing a presentation on the One Way Street Angled Parking Pilot Program. So, City Hall is growing and expanding. Currently, there are 91 employees in City Hall and 151 police people, including civilian workers. We have the City Hall Expansion and Civic Park Project that is to take place soon, and an issue that a lot of employees have noticed is the lack of available parking spaces. As part of the four-year Economic Development Strategic Plan, part of the city's plan is to analyze and resolve some of the parking situations. So, this is a picture of the current parking situation in City Hall. There are 110 total spots currently in City Hall. Five of those are handicap. Eight of those are for visitors, and seven of those are for reserved parking. And then, this is another picture of the current parking situation, and then another picture. So, as you can see, all the spots are full, and some people are actually parking in spaces that are not designated for parking. Current access to and from City Hall, a majority of employees and visitors take Grevilla Avenue or Hawthorne Boulevard. So, from Two City Hall, people will usually take Hawthorne Boulevard to 126th Street, heading westbound to access City Hall. And then, leaving City Hall, to access the 405 freeway, people will usually take Grevilla Avenue to El Segundo Boulevard. And then, to access the 105 freeway, people will usually take Grevilla Avenue to 120th Street. So, the current conditions right now on 126th Street from Hawthorne Boulevard to Grevilla Avenue, it is currently a two-way street, one travel lane per direction. The total width of the street from curb to curb is 35 feet. Parking is currently allowed on both sides. They are marked with the parking T's. So, eight spaces are marked on the north side, and then, there's also 30 feet of green curb, which is temporary 20-minute parking. And then, there's no parking for approximately 300 feet, and that is marked red. 14 spaces on the south side along the hotel side, and there's no parking for approximately 230 feet, also marked with red curb. So, that in total is 22 spaces currently. So, this is an aerial photo of the parking situation on 126th Street. So, again, eight spaces on the north, 14 spaces on the south, 22 total. So, what we're proposing with this pilot program is to convert 126th Street into a one-way street angled parking. So, that would mean that people would be able to drive only one-way westbound, so from Hawthorne Boulevard to Grevilla Avenue. So, there would be 46 total angled spaces, which is an increase from the current 24 spaces, and that more than doubles the existing amount of parking. So, angled parking would be on the south side of 126th Street, and then, this parking will be currently used when the City Hall Expansion construction takes place. So, this is the proposed layout for the one-way angled street parking. So, again, 46 total spaces, an increase of 24 from the current. 34 of those spaces would be permit parking only from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. 12 of those spaces, no parking permit required. And then, again, one westbound lane entering from Hawthorne Boulevard only towards Grevilla Avenue. Some examples of other cities that currently have on-street angled parking are Lawndale on Lawndale Way slash 147th Street, Redondo Beach on Broadway, Inglewood on Regent Street, and Manhattan Beach on Manhattan Beach Boulevard. And then, so, for the conversion to two-way to one-way street, if it is approved by City Council tonight, the conversion would start on February 28th. So, during this process, Public Works would set up two message boards on West 126th Street on both directions, and they will be up for approximately two weeks. We will also be posting flyers on our website and all of city social media, and we'll also have printed flyers posted in City Hall. In terms of the work, West 126th Street from Hawthorne Boulevard to Grevilla Avenue would be temporarily closed for a couple of days. Two of those days would be to remove the existing striping, and then, two of those days would be to install the new angled parking, the street striping, and the signs designating the one-way street. So, this is a temporary 18-month program. Public Works will be testing its effectiveness to see what the pros and cons are, and we will evaluate the traffic impact on Hawthorne Boulevard. And then, under council direction, if we deem it successful, then we would analyze other streets in the city to see which ones can be converted to one-way angled parking and see where we can increase parking that way. Thank you.
To the chair.
Councilwoman Montero, and then Councilwoman Manning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I always call you DJ, but I know he's not DJ.
DJ.
DJ, okay. Thank you for your presentation. Now, I'm all in favors about making this temporary one-way street, but my question is, when we create those parallel parking, right, can we designate them for City Hall, not for the hotels? Because we know the hotel people is going to be parking there.
So, that's why we said 34 of those spaces would be permit parking, which current city employees have. So, they would put the placard on their car. So, that would be in effect from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, right? And then, there's 12 spaces that don't need permit at all. But for the 34 spaces, it'd only be permit during those hours, and then afterwards...
It'll be open?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. All right, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
That was my question.
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you for the presentation. It's an 18-month pilot project. I know that you did feasibility study from other surrounding cities also, right?
Yes.
They're obviously permanent now, right?
Correct.
Yeah. I'm concerned with regards to the 12 parking spaces with the no-permit parking, just because I've observed that there's trailers attached to cars, and there's larger vehicles being used, which it's quite evident that could take up more parking, because like, for instance, if you have a vehicle and then an attached trailer, it's taking two spots.
Well, in this case, if it was angled parking, that trailer would actually stick out and block the traveled way. So, that could be preventive measure.
Okay. So, you'll have signage, obviously, that goes up, street signs with regards to what type of vehicle.
Correct.
No over-tonnage vehicles, all this other stuff, right?
Yeah. We can limit like the tonnage, or like, say, no commercial vehicles allowed.
Yeah, because I've also noticed the rigs that are parking inside the Marriott parking lot, and those things are huge, and they take a lot of room, because they have to make all these wide turns and spaces, you know, to get out. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks.
City Attorney Kim, you have a presentation?
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and the members of the city council. I was given a directive to do another PowerPoint regarding charter city. If you recall, about two years ago, I did another PowerPoint about charter city and what are the advantages and disadvantages. I think this is a more simplified version of what I presented two years ago. It just gives a simple explanation of what a general law city is versus a charter city, and what are the differences, okay? So, of course, city of Hawthorne is a general law city. And what that means is that as a general law city, which most of the cities, especially smaller cities in the state of California, are general law cities, and that general law city gains its police power, not the typical police officer type of part, but police power to enact ordinance and enforce the zoning laws and the city ordinance through the state constitution. All general law cities are subject to state legislation, meaning that the state law that Sacramento passes, general law city must comply with. The charter city, on the other hand, derives its authority from what's called home rule doctrine for dealing with municipal affairs. So, you're going to see, in the next slide, I'm going to explain the difference between what is called municipal affairs versus what's called statewide concern. And for charter cities, if the city of Hawthorne was, orders were to approve the city charter, and we become a charter city, the city would have some independence on issues that involves municipal affairs, meaning local issues, city issues. But even as a charter city, when an issue or laws involve the matter of statewide concern, even the charter cities still have to comply with the state laws. So, what is the distinction between municipal affairs versus statewide concern? I think the easiest way to look at this is municipal affairs are issues that affect only the city, whereas statewide concern would be issues that affect statewide. So, because of that, the definition of, sometimes there are case law where there's a gray area, where is this exclusively a municipal affair, or is it a statewide concern? That has to be defined through our court system. So, for instance, the housing shortage crisis went through the California Supreme Court, and it held that the housing shortage crisis was a statewide concern. So, based on that, we seen series of land use laws passed by Sacramento dealing to, in an attempt to deal with the housing shortage crisis. So, based on these case precedents, what are some of the statewide concern areas that is, that would be same for charter as a general law city? It would apply to both. Our school system. So, there's a logic to this, because you don't want a different standard for school for depending on the cities. You wanted to make it statewide, so we all have the same standard. A good example would be traffic laws. If each city made its own traffic laws because it was city municipal issue, then basically, if you drove through a different city that you didn't know, you may end up getting a ticket or accident, things of that nature. So, you could see the logic behind this, that some areas of law should be a statewide concern. So, it should apply regardless whether you're a charter or general law city. Trade and professions, professional licensing is another. You don't want a doctor's standard to be different based on the cities. So, I think you kind of get the point. So, the other areas of laws that are determined to be statewide concern would be Torque Claims Act against the government, the Brown Act, the eminent domain laws, and affordable housing. For instance, the housing element, it applied to all cities. And what are some of the examples of municipal affairs? So, these are areas that, as a charter city, your charter could have provisions that would be contrary or different from state laws. So, as a charter city in municipal election, you don't have to abide by the elections, California State Elections Code. Another area is procedures for initiative, referendum, and recall, or procedure for adopting ordinance. You know, we follow the government act. We have a couple of ordinance today in this meeting, where we go through two readings, five days apart. You have introduction, then adoption at the second reading. As a charter city, you could have a charter provision that strays away from that, and you could have your own way of doing adopting an ordinance. Compensation for city officials is an area that, as you know, we have an ordinance on the agenda today that's capped by the government code. That's considered to be municipal affairs. So, as a charter city, you don't have to abide by that government code, and you could set your own salary. Process for city contracts, such as the public bidding process, prevailing wages, these are areas that the courts have held to be municipal affairs, local issues. Financing public improvements is another area. Charitable gift of public funds for public purpose. For general law cities, you cannot make gift of public funds, but there are exceptions for charter cities. Term limits for council members, land use and zoning with certain exceptions. Forms of government is another area where charter cities, through the charter, can have different types of government. The city of Hawthorne is a strong city manager form of government, and we follow the government code. But as a charter city, you can make a strong mayor type of government. You could have rotating mayors, things of the nature, whatever the local area voters would approve of. Public contracts, land use and construction is another area that many charter cities have provisions that are different than the government code that general law cities follow. Charter cities are not required to have a bidding process. We had a situation where we considered possibly doing a land swap with public warehouse being constructed and designed by the seller. These are areas that, as a general law city, because there's no bidding process, we could not do. But as a charter city, you're allowed to do that if your charter provision has an exemption from the public bidding laws. You could have charters that allow zoning ordinance that's not consistent with the general plan, whereas a general law cities are required to have zoning ordinance that are consistent with general plan. Charter could allow exemption from prevailing wages, and there was a case law that specifically held that prevailing wages are local issues, and therefore, you could have a charter that could be exempt from that. The state legislature then returned right away, passed a legislation that said any state funding will require payment of prevailing wages. And of course, I mentioned this again, council compensation is not capped by the government code. So, in becoming a charter city, the first thing to do is for the city to approve a charter provision or charter language. And, you know, charters can be simple or complex. If you have a very large city, such as city of Los Angeles, I'm sure their charter is very complex. It restricts the authority of the council in a way, because charter, you could think of it as a constitution for the city. An ordinance, the charter would supersede the ordinance, and the ordinance cannot conflict with the charter. In order to, let's say, you form a charter, and you want it to change certain provisions of the charter, it would always have to go back to the voter approval. So, by that same token, that means that when you come up with a charter, it should be well thought out, thought ahead, so that you don't have to go back constantly to the election to amend your charter. So, what's involved in getting a ballot measure up to the voters? City council has to come up with a charter, and their charter and a resolution must be submitted to the county 88 days before the general election. This year is, the general election is November 5th of 2024. We have to go through two public hearings. If you recall, two years ago, we had to go through two public hearings 30 days apart. There's a written arguments for and against, and there are quite a bit of steps involved before it goes to a ballot measure. Now, I was asked to also do a timeline in order to bring a charter ballot measure for the voters. November 5th is the general election, and there are, and I don't want to go through each one of these steps. What I did put down there in this image is each of those dates on your left side, except for the general election, is the drop dead deadline, okay? So, that's the last date to do all this, and there are steps involved for the city clerk. The city attorney has to provide an impartial analysis on the arguments for and against. But the date that's most important here is May 23rd of 2024. That's the last day that the council has to approve a charter provision in order to, for the rest of the steps to take place in time, okay? So, May 23rd, it will be the last deadline. So, preferably, and it's highly recommended, that a consensus on the charter language be done before May 23rd, so we have some cushion in the timeline. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, sir.
For our third presentation, do we have our representative from WOW Media?
Yes, we do.
Sir, hi, how are you? Please go ahead.
Could IT help him with the load up of the presentation, please? One second, Mr. Chris.
Council Mayor Protem, thank you for having me, I appreciate taking a few minutes of your time here to explain the proposed municipal message centers that WOW is working with the city so closely in the past few weeks, actually month actually longer. So let me go to the next page. WOW Media has transformed Inglewood into a digital advertising powerhouse through our unique partnership between government and private industry. Our initiatives have modernized the city's digital infrastructure, boosting its cultural and economic vitality. This collaboration has generated millions for Inglewood, enhancing community projects and city services. It highlights the impact of creative urban advertising on community economic growth. As we look to Hawthorne, we carry this message of progress and partnership, ready for a new chapter of growth. Hawthorne bears much of the burden development in nearby Inglewood, but little of the benefits. And we're referring to SoFi, the new Intuit Dome, the Kia Forum, and all the traffic that that brings and everything else that comes into the city. By integrating with Inglewood's digital signage network, Hawthorne will unlock economic advantages and elevate advertising rates, ultimately channeling, channeling millions in revenue into the community. This is a rendering of some of the proposed municipal message centers. These twin towers would be located along the, specifically along the 105 and the 405 freeways exclusively. They'd be using modern architectural designs, we'd be working closely with the city in terms of design and the look and the feel of it, they would have the city emblems, and most importantly, it would, it would call out the City of Hawthorne. These municipal message centers would also be used for community events, for public service announcements, for emergency messaging, anything the city seen, deems appropriate that go on there. It could be for hiring police, for hiring fire, this is what's being done in the City of Inglewood as a way to communicate with its citizens and the community. These are the three proposed locations currently that have been discussed. Crenshaw Boulevard at the 105 freeway, that intersection, Rosecrans Avenue and the 405, El Segundo Boulevard and the 405 freeway. There'll be two municipal message centers at each of these locations, each one carries two, two sides. So you're talking about four different faces at each intersection there. These would be exclusively, by the way, facing the freeways, they would not be facing the city streets or anything like that. We took data from the 2324 budget, Hawthorne budget, and we compared it to what the revenue would bring from these municipal message centers in comparison. Depending on the size that we ultimately land on in terms of the municipal message centers, if we ended up with a 1,200 square foot sign, we're looking at $7.3 million annually for the City of Hawthorne. If we ended up going larger at about 3,500 square feet or thereabouts, you'd be looking at 18.26 million annually for the City of Hawthorne. As neighboring Inglewood grows in prosperity and becomes the centerpiece of tourism, sports, and entertainment venues, the integrated MMCs make Hawthorne a full participant. Visibility boost. Interconnected networks maximize space and does desirability across regions. Increase in revenue. The integrated approach can lead to significant increase in revenue benefiting both cities financially. Premium rates. Advertisers will pay a premium rates for the broad reach and impact provided by the network of the MMCs. What we're really saying here is by integrating one network of signs, what's happening in Inglewood to its neighboring city Hawthorne, we can drive the same type of revenues that we're doing there, which is the highest in all of Los Angeles. If we extrapolated the revenue by 40 years for the proposed term of the agreement for the 1,200 foot signs, you're looking at $270 million for the city. At the larger sign at 3,500 square feet, you're looking at approximately $657 million and, for 40 years, and respectively 7.3 and 18.26. Now keep in mind, this is assuming that the signs are only filled up half the time. We're being very conservative on these numbers. And as the city grows and your neighbors grow, and the popularity grows and becomes kind of the beacon of entertainment and, and sports, these revenues will grow alongside. We are still at the bottom of the market in terms of advertising revenue in that city. And then I put together a lot of FAQs that you might want to read on your own, I don't have to go through them all, I gladly answer any questions you might have specifically on this, if you have questions for me.
City Chair?
Yes.
So I, my first question would be what other cities have you worked with, and what was their revenue?
City of Inglewood is the city we've worked with.
Is that the only city that you've worked with?
Yes, we've worked with many, I've been in the business for 25 years, and we've worked with independent property owners and different groups, but never with the city. City of Inglewood, we started with them in 2015, pre-stadiums, and then we built our first signs in 2017, and it's been a great partnership ever since.
And so the data in terms of the revenue, where'd you pull it from?
From the revenue, we're pulling from the City of Inglewood. City of Inglewood, just for reference, since its inception, has taken in $23 million from WOW. Now, keep in mind that the growth of the network did not start with 22 signs that we have currently in the ground, it started with three. So it's been incrementally growing throughout the several years. So right now, we're building one more sign in about six months.
So how many contracts you get on average a year with the City of Inglewood to get to this million dollars, 18 million or whatever million you have?
Are you referring to contracts with advertisers?
Yes.
Oh, it's countless, I couldn't even give you a number honestly. The way it works in advertising is they buy four weeks at a time, eight weeks at a time, so the contracts, we're talking about national advertisers, by the way, we're not talking about local advertisements revenue here, we're talking about Apple, you know, Hyundai, any national advertiser you could think of.
My only concern is that you have a bunch of numbers here, but I don't see any data that support it. So the numbers that you're putting here, we just have to go off what you say, but the data that support those numbers, I would like to see.
Fair enough.
Scott, if I can jump in really quick. I think what we're missing is the network that our advertisements would be in conjunction with the Inglewood, excuse me, the Inglewood marketing advertising.
Correct.
So I think Councilman Manning, if you can explain how that will overlay to Hawthorne, that we're not a one-off advertisement in Hawthorne.
Fair enough. So the way the network is sold, we have 22 structures in the City of Inglewood right now. All 22 are sold as a network, not as a single sign. And we have one price that goes across each sign, and then obviously if they buy bulk, they get a discount. Those same prices would flow across to the City of Hawthorne, because they'd be part of the same network, I'm sorry, part of the same network. So the data I'm pulling is from actual numbers of what we sold in that revenue, and the rates we're selling currently in the City of Inglewood, and we expect nothing less here. In fact, if we do end up making, creating the larger structures, we'll be driving significantly more on those structures than even the other signs.
So you're saying that when people buy in our city, those advertisement will show up in Inglewood as well?
Yes, yes, and vice versa, yeah. So they'll buy, for example, we have currently eight faces, I'm sorry, four faces, two structures on the 405 over in Inglewood. Those will be sold as a package with the same structures here in Hawthorne, just a little further south.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
City Chair?
Go ahead.
So I want to confirm something, I'm looking at the FAQs that this would be at no cost to the City of Hawthorne.
Correct.
So if it was, if it failed, for whatever reason, it didn't, doesn't cost us any money?
That's right.
And we all, my assumption, we'll start receiving monies from WOW, would it be immediately or once WOW recouped its investment?
Both. So there's a minimum annual guarantee, so you'll be receiving, I think it's $100,000 per, per sign, per month, I'm sorry, per year. And then after that, that's your minimum annual guarantee, after we've recovered our investment on the smaller signs, which is a maximum of two years out, we have two years to recover our investment, then it goes immediately to a 50/50 split with the city. However, if we do end up doing the larger signs, which are significantly much more expensive.
Sure.
That will go out until that money is recovered on those signs, we're projecting at about four years.
Let me ask you, you have identified three locations, would that be three signs or would that be six signs?
Three locations would be a total of 12 signs.
Be 12 signs.
Yes, because each location would have four faces, two structures on each.
So the minimum guarantee would be, is that 1.2 million?
Give you the exact numbers here, sorry.
Am I making that number up? All right.
It's.
12 signs times 100,000.
If I may, that's under the resolution to approve the, so I mean, all those informations are in the agenda bill for the resolution to approve the agreement. That would be item number, number 10. So if you look at your.
To answer your question, it's 108,000 per face.
Right, so times 12, which would be what?
Correct, roughly 1.2, 1.3 million.
That's what I said, right?
Your math is better than mine, I'm sorry.
Awesome. So that'd be the minimum guarantee, and then after the initial investment's recouped, it's a 50/50 split. What are the size of the signs in Inglewood?
1,200 square feet.
And that is, that the smaller, that's the smaller one that you're talking about, and that would, under your estimation of 50% occupancy, 50% split, $7 million a year?
Correct.
And if we go for the big boys, it'll take a few more, a couple more years to recoup the initial investment, but potentially much larger payout.
Much larger payout.
Got it. Let me see, let me look at my notes, make sure I ask all my questions.
Scott, if you can go back to the worksheet for the budget, please?
And how, how long does it take to build these signs?
Once we're permitted, we could have them built 90 days.
Okay, awesome. That's all I got.
Thank you for the presentation. Why WOW?
Why not? The simple answer is because we have a unique ability to command the highest rates in this stretch of the area, because of our dominance in Inglewood. We are the only digital network in Inglewood, and there are no other competitors in the area. Thereby, we're able to command the highest rates as a result. In other areas, for example, let's pick like downtown Los Angeles, you'll have 10 different vendors, and they're all competing for the same dollars, the same market share, and they're all competing to drive the market, they're driving the market down. For us, it's just the opposite. Our rates are climbing almost 20% annually. We started in 2017, and we've already almost tripled our rate since that date. And we're still, I'm telling you, at the bottom of the market. The stadiums have just started moving, right? We have the trifecta coming around the corner, which is the soccer, we have another Superbowl, and we have the Olympics. So those three events alone will drive, make these numbers escalate. And who knows what's, what else is in the future? So to answer your question very politely, nobody else can compete with us in terms of our rates, because of the dominance that we have in the area.
So you have no billboards, no, as large as they are here, anywhere in LA?
Nope.
Just Inglewood?
We are 100% Inglewood-centric. We are, we are putting everything we have into this city.
Out of curiosity, how were you selected from the City of Inglewood to be the sole billboard develop, development?
Same processes here. We, we came to the city with a proposal, they were, at that time, in 2015, they were in a major budget deficit, they were looking for ways to increase revenue. They'd already introduced some super graphics, which you've probably seen along the freeways, those giant wall scapes, they'd already kind of tasted what that could be. So we came to a window of proposal of putting digital signage in the same type of proposal we're giving you here today, the exact same deal.
So who builds it?
We do.
And how are we, do we go 50/50 on the build out?
No, no, no. We, we put up all the capital, we build everything, we maintain it, there's no cost to the city whatsoever. We put everything upfront. The only thing we have is a window of two years to recover our investment for the smaller signs, and a longer window to recover the larger signs, which we're estimating to be almost $11, $11 million.
So the upkeep and the maintenance and everything else, the lights go out, you go and put new bulbs in, what have you?
Yeah, pretty much, we'd go, I'd climb up to myself and chase the bulbs.
Well, you're, you're one man, you know, man at this point, that's why I said why I'm just curious, because you know, I'm also an advocate for the people of Hawthorne, and those that would be driving the freeways and highways and having to see this, right? And there's been concerns in Los Angeles, although we're not Los Angeles, of how bright these boards can often be, and how it's a deterrent. So out of just curiosity, I have to ask the question, just because of all those things I just mentioned. What was the pushback that you got in Inglewood from residents with regards to having to see this on Century Boulevard or other areas going down to LAX, etc.? What have been some of the remarks or things that have coming out of Inglewood with regards to these, how bright, how big they are and how bright they are?
I mean, it's hard to believe, but it's been nominal. It's really not been hardly any pushback whatsoever. We did pull back on a few proposed locations, because we actually felt they would be problematic. After looking further at it, we were at a park, we decided not to put it at the park, we felt that the lights might be flashing in the windows, and so we pulled back on that. The last thing we want to do is disrupt the city and, and you know, aggravate its residents, that's not our goal. That's why these are specifically tailored for the freeways. They're also, the, the lights are dimmed automatically per day and per night. They, an interesting fact in terms of safety, we did an independent traffic safety off the 405, and it was found that since the billboards went up, there was a 35% decrease in accidents. Maybe because they're not looking down at their phones and looking at billboards. I can't tell you why, but that is a statistic that we found to be true, so.
Is there going to be any type of outreach in the community?
There can be, and I'm certainly welcome any questions from the community, I'm happy to come back and speak to the community, whatever the council mayor asks me to do.
And then the content that's going to be on these boards, I know that there was language here in the presentation where, you know, they're sensitive with regards to our beliefs here in Hawthorne and what's, you know, considered advertisement, etc. I know in the past, I've had to call the attorney's office regarding, you know, strip clubs and whatnot being posted on these billboards that we have here in Hawthorne, and you know, it's something we don't want to see, right?
Fair enough.
Who oversees that, you yourself, or do you have staff? I mean, because I know there's things that happen accidentally sometimes, right? No?
No.
No. I'm curious, because they said the same thing here, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know how I got there. I, I'd like to know, you know, I'm, I'm talking from experience, right? Because Hawthorne Boulevard is showing where to go to a strip club here in Hawthorne.
Yeah.
Right? So I, and they didn't, they didn't have an answer, because I was asking, how did that get there if we had agreed that that's kind of stuff was not going to be there?
Right. So there are no accidents, there's a, there's a process in which ads are approved. Number one, we don't do anything lewd or pornographic. Number two, we don't even run cannabis ads. We've been approached many times, and we can, according to our agreement with the city, for example, but you have to understand the caliber of clients that we have running on the screens, we're talking about Disney, we're talking about Apple, we're talking about very beautiful, high-class, national ads. We don't want to run that type of ad, we don't want to run, you know, schlocky, distasteful graphics, we just, not what we want to do. We've, we've rejected. graphics. We just, not what we want to do. We've, we've rejected, uh, ads. For example, Rihanna came to us with an ad. It was not appropriate to put on the screens. Um, we sent it back to them, said, if you want to be on our screens, you have to cut this out. They did. And if they didn't, we wouldn't play it. And if there's ever anything questionable, we will always run it by the city. Because one thing we understand is these boards, ultimately, these structures are going to belong to you, and they're going to have your name on them. So we don't want to put something on there that, that the city's, uh, residents are going to be calling you about. It's just not going to.
You hear that, Robert?
Very aware of that.
So we're, we're very careful. We self-police. We do have restrictions. We do, in the contract that do not allow certain things. But we, at the end of the day, um, it just doesn't, it's not the caliber of ads we're going to do. They can't afford it.
But there's not a rush, is there, for these boards?
Well, um.
Why?
Well, we're looking at the screen. It's potential eighteen million dollars a year.
In spite of that, I mean, it's not like as we're gonna, you know?
Right.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just curious because, you know?
Well, let me just say this. As we talk about getting ready for the trifecta, we want to be ready as a city, and we're going to miss the boat again. So my opinion, city manager, this is a very important resource for the city.
So they're saying ninety days, you're going to have this build out in ninety days?
Well, there's gonna, there's all, there'll also be a CECO process as well, so it's, not overnight.
Yeah.
This will take time.
Yeah.
This will take time. Not for us as much, is, but more from a legislative standpoint.
And if I may, there's a, you know, staffer from Ms. McKenna's offices here, and she has already introduced an assembly bill for, on behalf of the City of Hawthorne, supported and co-authored by Senator Bradford.
Yeah, I, I, I read the agenda bill. I'm just curious, you know, as far as a timeline, as far as, you know, I get all of that.
We have to wait for that too.
I'm, I'm just being, you know, I just want to assure that the community is aware of what we're looking at, what we're looking to bring in. And if there has to be an outreach with regards to concerns, I want there to be that ability, you know?
Are we, we good? Do we have anybody else who would like to comment?
Can I?
Yes, you had something you wanted to mention. Go ahead.
So, um, I just had two more questions. The cost of the software updates. Um, is there a cost? And then after the four years, would we have to continue to pay you to update the software?
I'm not sure when we're talking about software. There are no costs.
Well, it says how quickly emergency, um, on your FAQ, it talks about what is the maintenance requirement for the digital MMC. So it says software updates. So do you charge us for software updates?
No.
Okay. So as long as we own this for after four years, you'll continue to update the?
Yes.
With no cost to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, let's keep moving. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the next, uh, thing. Uh, the next discussion is Captain Lane. You have a presentation on drones. Everybody's talking about drones can do everything. Why don't you just get a drone out there? That'll solve the problem. Right. So what are the things they can do and things that they can't?
We'll show you right now, sir. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, fellow electeds, thank you very much. We're going to talk about the drone program that the Hawthorne Police, uh, implemented in July of two thousand twenty-one. So at that time, only El Segundo and Torrance Police Departments had a drone program. Uh, this was on the emerging, uh, SoFi Stadium. Drones were coming out and starting to be used within the city or within their neighboring cities. So we sent three officers to drone training, uh, FAA Part one oh seven training in order, in order to be certified drone pilots. Uh, at the time, we bought two drones, and we began deploying them mostly at SoFi, uh, Stadium as well as in patrol to assist officers with overwatch, uh, safety, security. Uh, three years later, we have now twenty drone pilots and about five drones. Uh, those five drones are shared amongst the officers, uh, on different shifts as well as responding to calls for service. We divide up our drone program into three different, uh, events. One is a pre-planned event. So during the Centennial Parade, we had drones up that were providing overwatch for the event. If we have movies in the parks or other events where we have large gathering of crowds, we have drones that we put up in order to monitor, uh, the crowd, make sure that everybody's safe. Uh, we do the same for SoFi Stadium as part of our, uh, contract services to provide services for law enforcement officers there. We also provide our officers and patrol that are certified drone pilots the ability to take a drone with them. They're about the size of a briefcase, put them in the back of their car, and if an event occurs where they need a drone, which we'll show you some videos here shortly, they can put that up really as a way to, uh, provide safety, distance from, uh, bad things occurring. And the last is the Drone First Responder Program. So Chula Vista, about five years ago, maybe a little bit longer, implemented a, what's called a DFR program, Drone First Responder. So this is similar to the helicopter being up, except it can be, uh, manned twenty-four seven with the proper staffing cost, maintenance, all those different, uh, items that go to it. But the drone can be launched and be overhead at an incident about eighty percent faster than a police officer can. Uh, just some authorities that you have to have to fly. There's federal, local, uh, as well as department. You need to be a certified commercial pilot for drones, which is a federal test that you have to take through, uh, the FAA. Then we have to have relationships with, uh, the Hawthorne Tower, LAX Tower, and have waivers to be able to fly within our city. And then lastly, department policy. Um, we actually work in a very challenging area because of the Hawthorne Airport and because of LAX. We have very low, uh, requirements that we can fly at. Um, so we are such a heavily monitored airspace, we have to stay below a certain level. So we have an agreement with Hawthorne Airport to stay below a hundred and fifty feet, except for approach and departure where as you get closer, we get lower and lower to where we can't fly because of safety for airplanes. Uh, going back to pre-planned events, uh, mutual aid, uh, special events, also, uh, patrol response, security checks, uh, police containments when we have a subject maybe barricaded in, in an area to be able to put that up, monitor the person, uh, canine deployments, which, uh, really help make sure that other members of the community aren't in the area where our dogs may be as well as, uh, suspects. And then lastly, the police radio call DFR program. Uh, we're in talks with, uh, the future of responding with AEDs and Narcan with a drone to a call to deploy that, uh, before officers and fire departments can get there. But that's, that's a ways out, but that's the future that we want to get to. Just a little bit about our drone equipment. Most drones, uh, they average, uh, anywhere between five thousand to fifteen thousand dollars, depending on the drone. They last about two to three years. Uh, they are very well-maintained, and they have very good mechanics and electronic systems to prevent them from running into objects. So very rarely are they damaged. But there are limitations. So these aren't the military drones that are fueled, that can maintain flight for a day or hours. These drones can only fly about twenty to thirty minutes. Weather affects that also. So if it's a cold night, or it's a very hot day, or if it's raining, that affects the battery life as well as the distance that you're traveling. So like I discussed about the Hawthorne Airport, with being a hundred and fifty feet, uh, that we can go up to, you have to be able to have line of sight of your drone because you're responsible for any objects that are around that drone. Now with that, you're also limited by the radio frequency. Most of these drones are, are radio frequencies similar to police radios. So your radius of flight is roughly a mile. Uh, so that's line of sight as well as the distance that the drone can travel based on the radio frequency. Then it takes anywhere from one to two minutes to get the drone to the location. You have about twenty minutes of what's called loiter time or surveillance time of that incident before the drone needs to come back and then be, the battery be replaced. Now, once again, these drones are very high technology, so if you don't recall the drone becau, and the battery's, uh, starting to go dead, the drone automatically comes back and lands. It, it won't fall out of the sky. Uh, this is, uh, one of the first drones that we had here. Uh, this is a, a very, very good, reliable drone. They're compact. They have very, uh, high-end camera systems, spotlights and speakers. Um, but once again, it's older technology, so these drones are roughly about two to three years old. This is the type of drone that our officers are carrying in the back of their patrol cars and also that are providing overwatch or, um, crowd control at SoFi and at other events. This drone, uh, is a much larger drone. It's about the size of this podium here, uh, with the arms out. And once again, uh, because it's such a big drone, the battery life is very similar, but its capabilities, it can fly in, uh, gale-force winds, it can fly in rain, uh, snow, but you're limited once again on the distance, the elevation, as well as the battery life. With that, I'm going to, uh, show you a series of videos that will go through the pre-planned events, patrol events, and then also, uh, some drone first responder. So this was an event here at, I believe it was outside of SoFi. A large crowd that we were monitoring. Uh, there's obviously no audio because it's, uh, up in the air, but roughly probably five to ten thousand people, if not more. And we work with the City of Inglewood to provide information, uh, crowd control, officer safety, crowd safety, make sure that ingress and egress is available for officers to get to and from locations as well as, uh, the crowds. We do a lot of traffic control. So when, uh, games are over at the end of SoFi events, we are up providing, uh, traffic control with CHP as well as the City of Inglewood, and the same here in the City of Hawthorne. Uh, this event was actually at Rosecrans and Aviation. Subject was up on the railroad crossing here, and he was pointing a gun at passing vehicles. So you'll see him making forward movements with what appears to be a gun. Officers are down below. He just tossed the weapon there, and now we can monitor that and say, hey, he's walking away from the weapon. He's walking in this direction, and we can use that to our advantage to reduce uses of force liability, send the right resources there, as well as verifying that this subject was armed at one point, uh, pointing at a passerby. He was also throwing rocks at vehicles, and so a lot of this is captured on these devices, which provides evidence for prosecution, uh, when these subjects are arrested. This one here, this subject, uh, is hiding behind this fence. You'll see him moving around in the middle of the screen. It's, uh, like a, a highlighted white. Our officers are in the upper right. Um, once again, they can monitor these events from their phones. This information is sent to our officers' phones. Uh, the sergeant on scene, the lieutenant can provide information to the officers where they should deploy, we should stay back. Uh, we can provide, we can let the residents know that, hey, this subject's outside, they haven't broken in, stay inside your house, keep your doors locked. Uh, and then this subject is, yes, free to move in this area, but we're also not sending officers over fences, uh, into the backyard where uses of force or resistance is likely to be met. Uh, these subjects, the subject here was actually hiding in a bush. You can kind of see a, a little lightish gray color. It was nighttime. Officers don't want to go into the embankment and go contact people that are hiding from, from crimes. These subjects were behind the Porsche dealership on the four oh five. They're laying down. Officers were able to call them out and bring them to the officers, and the entire time, the drone pilot is advising the officers, hey, we can see his hands. You might not be able to see his hands, but we can see him. His hands appear to be empty. And the drones are capable of also providing a spotlight as well as, uh, one-way communication. So we can provide information to the subject, put your hands up. We see you hiding there, come out as another way to de-escalate through, uh, communication where we wouldn't be able to have that communication along the freeway. Uh, another one here, uh, you can't see the subjects currently right now. They're actually be, between the houses. The officers were getting ready to come up to contact these people. They had stolen a car, and the drone pilot saw this movement coming out from between the bushes and stopped the officers from going to potentially a, a, a dangerous position, allowing the officers to move back and then call these subjects out to them to be arrested. Another video here of a subject that, uh, was under the influence of narcotics in a backyard. Officers had the area contained. Uh, he's running through different backyards. Uh, you'll see he actually, uh, confronts, uh, a dog in the backyard that is probably the owner's dog, and that seemed to have the desired effect to get him to go back over the fence. Uh, and then as he does that, uh, he's very savvy, so he grabs a ladder and then scales up into a tree. Now, all of this, you know, is, it's exciting to watch. It provides a lot of information. But for officers, uh, on the ground, this allows them to understand where they need to be positioned. Uh, you know, time equals, or distance equals time. So the more distance you have, the more time you have to make decisions. Uh, you can take affirmative movements and, uh, process those without a quick response. So, uh, the amount of information that, that this drone provided during this incident was, was valuable. So this is a security check of a school. So we get calls of, um, you know, burglary, audible alarms at schools. Uh, our canine officers tend to go by themselves with their canine dog to check the schools, to make sure the schools aren't broken into. And while they're there, they put up a drone in order to support this officer and his canine while they're searching the school. Uh, as you can tell, it's raining in this video. Um, so, and the spotlight is actually providing, uh, light for the officer to be able to see, uh, what's coming up, as well as they have a thermal vision that is not shown in this where they can see heat sources at the same time. The subjects here, you'll see them in the top. So these subjects were breaking into, um, a commercial building. The officer showed up and they figured they would lay down. Uh, now on any other day without a drone, those subjects go unnoticed and unrecognized because they're twenty feet elevated on a flat surface. They didn't know the drone was up, so it allowed the officers to position themselves and then eventually call them down, and they were taken into custody. Now, those were the, the police incidents. I just want to show you a couple, uh, ways that we work with our county fire department. So this drone here, this was a, a very large residential fire in the Gardens area over at Prairie. And this is what is the, uh, that the firefighters are fighting. So we are able to provide this information. We link up with what's called Unified Command with fire departments, and we provide this information, working together to resolve whatever the incident is, allow them to monitor the view and then attack that fire how they see fit. And these capabilities, uh, though you think of county agencies that are very large and they have a lot of resources, one of the great things about our city is we're very nimble and very quick, and LA County Fire doesn't have these resources. So we're able to provide this assistance to our community, to the neighbors, and to LA County Fire in order to attack this fire. Now, uh, I'm going to fast forward to one more video. It's the same incident, but, uh, this is another way that we were able to quickly locate another fire. The fire had jumped to another roof, and had this drone not been up, another structure, uh, would have been, uh, on fire and taken down. So you'll see it, you'll see it start to come up here. A resident has a hose, and he's trying to, uh, put out the fire. So you'll see, as they pan back around, the roof of this building is on fire. It's two properties away. And because of this drone pilot and that drone, I, those residents probably were not evacuated. If they were, great job. But if they're not, now we have, uh, another threat, another issue that we're dealing with, and we're able to provide these resources, uh, for our community. That's the presentation. Uh, I would take any questions if you would like to ask.
Uh, thank you so much, Captain.
Thank you.
For the awesome report. Um, I was very impressed by the. uh, clarity which the pictures uh, give us, especially from, you know, such a far distance. You could, you could be up there and they don't even know you're up there. You, they can't hear the buzzing of the, of the blades or the motors, et cetera. So um, it's a very efficient tool when need, uh, when you need it. Uh, thank you for putting this together. I'm, I'm really impressed and I'm glad we have something like this in our city.
Thank you.
To the chair. Thank you, Captain Lane.
Thank you.
I, I'm curious because I see drones over where I live, which is on Prairie Avenue near the uh, 120th or say, for instance, there on North Rip Way. Uh, who regulates that? Who oversees those uh, you know, maybe illegal drones?
So that's a very good question. There is a software out there that we actually have uh, that, that allows us to see where a pilot is flying a drone from as well as the FAA. So all these drones have, for lack of terms, a, a chip that is relayed to the controller. So the drone is attached to the controller. That person has to register that drone in order to fly that drone. That information is shared with the FAA and then it's shared open source as well because the, the, the drone is, is registered. We have a software that you can go back and then find out who that person was and then you can take that through the FAA process. So we, we don't enforce those, those rules. They're enforced on us as we fly, obviously, because we have to be within uh, commercial guidelines. But we use that then to find uh, drone pilots that aren't authorized. We'll go over and contact them if we can, uh, get their information and then forward that off. But most of the time, we capture that information and then send it as needed.
No, it's great, great video, great efforts. Thank you.
We're good.
Yes, Chad.
Yes.
Thank you, Captain Lane. Uh, that actually is tremendous to see that, right? It, it's good for the public to see, uh, because that will give the police a tool to be more transparent, right? Because then the, the officer can write a report based on, on what he sees on that drone's eye. So it's fantastic technology and that's what we have to do is to use good technology, these drones, to make sure that our police department is equipped to be sure to respond to this, those incidents and then to be able to see how you guys not put your lives in danger and the community is not in danger. So it's, it's a fantastic tool. So keep, keep doing good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much, Captain Lane. Awesome. Let's give him a big round of applause for putting this together. Human Resources Director Lampkin, Erica Lampkin, please proceed with the final presentation on the Good Neighbor Award.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and the remaining council members. Tonight, I'm going to present to you the Good Neighbor Award nominees for the month of January. When I call your name, nominees, please stand. Deborah Johnson. Debbie was hired in uh, December of 2001 for the Public Works Department as a custodian. She consistently demonstrates great work ethic, reliability and professionalism. Debbie not only demonstrates strong, a strong commitment to maintaining City Hall, but also showcases a deep sense of community spirit. She is always willing to help at community events when her assistance is needed. Her actions not only align with the city's core value of service to others, but also highlighted her dedication to going above and beyond her regular duties to make a positive impact on the lives of residents. Debbie has played a crucial role in maintaining the cleanliness of our City Hall, providing a safe and welcoming environment for residents and visitors alike. Debbie's commitment to her role as, has contributed to her, excuse me, to the efficient operation of the Public Works Department. Her reliability and attention to detail have ensured that tasks are completed promptly and to a high standard, allowing other staff members to focus on their responsibilities without concern for the cleanliness of City Hall. Debbie's positive attitude and willingness to assist others have made her a valued member of the department's team. Debbie consistently provides exemplary service to the city and its residents by ensuring that public spaces are clean, safe and well-maintained. Our next nominee is DJ Torado. DJ was hired by the city in February 2021 for the Public Works Department as an engineering technician. Upon his hire, DJ was immediately involved with implementing the city's virtual City Hall online permitting system and the My Civic 311 service app. He was then promoted to Assistant Engineer in March of 2022. He has been involved with various city improvement projects such as the Holly Glenn and Jim Thorpe Park Projects and the Aviation Railroad Project. He is currently managing the Hawthorne Boulevard Traffic Signal Improvement Project, the city's parking tee program and the City Hall Expansion and Civic Center, excuse me, Civic Park Project. DJ recently passed the California Traffic Engineering Exam this past December and is now a Registered Traffic Engineer. DJ exemplifies all of Hawthorne's core values. He displays professionalism collaborating with city staff, consultants, contractors and other agencies such as LA County, Metro and Caltrans. He remains calm and respectful whenever he speaks with residents, providing excellent customer service and always listens to their concerns. He always works with integrity and accountability by taking charge of projects and is willing to assist his fellow engineers. He also looks for innovative ways to address the traffic concerns in the city, to address speeding in the Ramona area. DJ has crosswalks and uh, and had crosswalks and additional striping installed to visually narrow the street. He also had new signs installed promoting the street as a slow street neighborhood. Residents have noticed a decrease in speeding and have commented that the crosswalks remind them of Abbey Road. DJ has made tremendous contributions to the Public Works Department. After the city, excuse me, after retirement of the city's traffic engineer, DJ stepped up and took the initiative to learn about traffic engineering. He is now in charge of the traffic and safety improvement projects for the city. He also manages the city's speed bump program, painted curbs, stop signs and crosswalks. This past, excuse me, December, he secured $200,000 in federal grant funding to create an action plan for the city to improve traffic safety and help prevent deaths and serious injuries on the city's roadways. He also secured $250,000 in state funding from CalRecycle for street improvement projects. He is currently managing the City Hall Expansion and Civic Park Project. DJ comes into work every day, on time, ready to work with positive energy. He always displays a positive attitude with, with staff and is eager to help out the community. He is willing to broaden his knowledge in engineering by attending webinars and classes and learn from other engineers. He is also at the Public Works booth for many city events such as Bunny, Earth Day and World Fest. As the city's traffic engineer, DJ continues to work hard to increase traffic safety for the city. He's a valuable asset, not just for the Public Works Department, but for the entire city. Our next nominee is Ron Lewis. Ron Lewis is nominated for the Good Neighbor Award in recognition of his exceptional dedication and outstanding service as a public safety officer with the Hawthorne Police Department since 2006. He has consistently demonstrated a remarkable commitment to his responsibilities, particularly in his role within the jail. His extensive expertise has proven invaluable and he has gone above and beyond the, and by willingly sharing his knowledge with new hires, contributing significantly to the training and development of the team. He has outstanding quality, qualities and is unwavering and has an unwavering positive attitude. Regardless of the challenges he faces, he approaches his work with enthusiasm and a genuine sense of pride. This positive outlook has a notable impact on the morale of the entire department and has created a supportive and collaborative work environment. In addition to his regular duties, um, he exemplifies the true spirit of a good neighbor by consistently making himself available to assist when the jail is short-staffed. His willingness to go the extra mile and his reliable presence during critical times reflect his strong sense of responsibility and dedication to the well-being of the entire team. Ron Lewis is highly deserving of the Good Neighbor Award. His years of service experience, positive attitude and willingness to support his colleagues make him an exemplary member of the Hawthorne Police Department. Honoring Mr. Lewis with this award would not only recognize the, his individual achievements, but also serve as an inspiration to others within the department. The committee is always challenged when we receive um, such wonderful nominations with all the accolades, but this time the committee select, selected DJ Torado. If you three would come up and take a picture with council members?
I have three or four. Madam Clerk, the uh, guideline for oral communications, please.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954 dot three, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report and/or recommendation.
I have three cards. Uh, going to ask Assembly Member McKinner's office to please come up. Haley Hutt.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, community members. My name is Haley Hutt here representing Assembly Member Tina McKinner's office. Um, first, I want to just touch on the presentation that was presented earlier on um, the bill that was presented uh, up in Sacramento by Assembly Member McKinner, co-sponsored by Senator Stephen Bradford, is AB 1869 regarding the um, billboards getting put up. And um, there is a fact sheet out. It hasn't been presented to committee yet, but it has been brought to the floor. Um, it should be presented to the committee um, at the beginning of March. Um, the fact sheet is created and I do have some business cards available. And if anyone is interested, I'm more than happy to share that fact sheet and keep you updated as the bill does progress. Um, I do see Senator Bradford's staff is here as well, so I'm pretty sure she would be happy to give you her information as well um, for that. Um, secondly, I'm here to talk about our upcoming event. Um, are you ready for the next emergency? We did just have an earthquake last week. Uh, I don't know if anybody was prepared, but I for sure wasn't because I wasn't here. But for those that were here, I hope that you were prepared and safe. Everybody is here today. Um, um, but we are getting ready for uh, our emergency preparedness event, March 9th in Westchester. Last year, we had the honor of, of doing our first one in partnership with Mayor Vargas um, here in the city of Hawthorne and now we are taking it west. So we hope that is not too far for our Hawthorne community to attend, but we'd love to have you there. Again, we are giving away emergency preparedness kits. Um, for the first 100 people that do show up and participate, we will have a passport process. Um, so make sure you hit all the tables. You get a free backpack. Um, we will have a large first aid kits as well. Um, backpacks accommodate a family of four for the first 72 hours of an emergency. We will have organizations like the Red Cross, the Fire Department, um, CERT will be there. Um, we do have an earthquake shaker that is an eight-person um, shaker that will be present for you to go in and sit and experience a 7.2 or higher earthquake. I can't recall what the exact is. Um, I hope that that never happens here in the city of Hawthorne nor Los Angeles where I live, but I hope that we will all be prepared by you showing up to this event. So I have some flyers. I do have business cards and if you'd like one, I'm more than happy to give one. Um, thank you so much for allowing me to speak and hope you all have a great evening.
Thank you. And uh, please send our regards to uh, the Assembly Member, please. Fay Johnson?
Thank you, uh, Mayor and Councilmen Women. Thank you. Um, I'm reporting on behalf of the Veterans Affairs Commission again about our military banner program. I wanted to give you guys a quick update. Um, so far, we have been advertising at the Hawa, Kwanis, Hawthorne Kwanis Club. Um, I have an article coming out on Thursday in the South Bay Times. We had a cable interview with Commissioner Lucero that's been advertising. Hopefully everybody saw that. Um, Erica Lampkin included us in the um, uh, the Hawthorne Newsletter. And we also have another event coming up on Sunday at the VFW Hawthorne, VFW Post 2075 on 131st Street from nine to 12. They do breakfast every third Sunday of the month and we're gonna be there. The Veterans Affairs Commission is gonna be there. We're gonna have a table there advertising and taking donations. So um, not from them, but from people who come to do breakfast. To give you an update on the banner, we did change a couple of things only because of some of the challenges that we saw. Um, one of the things that we did change is the date, the suspense date. We now changed it to a sliding date. Um, we'll keep it open since the city can only put up five a day anyway. Um, we didn't want to say, okay, we have to have them all in by this time when we could continue to put them up through October, November timeframe. So we're gonna keep that open. If they don't make the deadline for this year, i.e. the city says we can't put up anymore and the program is coming to an end, they'll be included in 2025 program. The other thing that we changed, um, because we're having a hard time, we're meeting a lot of people that we would like to honor, but because of the rules that we made that it had to be a Hawthorne resident, we're missing out on a lot of people. So the, the board, I mean, the commission met and we agreed to change it. We are expanding our requirements to Hawthorne resident, past and present, and, and I'll explain why past in a minute. Uh, family members of a Hawthorne resident and business owners in Hawthorne because they're our community too and our employees, because they're our community too. And if you're here, you're working for us, you're making our city better. We want to honor you or your family member too. And so um, the reason why we said past is because I was, uh, it was brought to my attention at the Kwanis Club that we had a guy that used to come into the bank every day. Um, that was a crotchety old war veteran who wanted his check on the first, but it didn't come in until the fifth. Um, and so I, I got, that got brought to my attention by the teller who used to wait on him and he moved out of Hawthorne and he died with his family back home. But when he did his research on him, come to find out he was a Congressional Medal of Honor. So um, that's just giving you guys an update and we did expand our thing, our um, requirements and we did raise the deadline. So please get your applications in. We're, uh, you can grab them and turn them in at, at the uh, HR department.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, Fay, do you, did you guys, uh, do you guys have a link online or is it just all paper-based? If you don't have a link online, maybe some, somebody can download the form. We could have a link on the website or something. Okay?
Erica's really great about all that, so she'll get it for us, I'm sure.
Okay, we'll talk about it offline. Thank you so much. Just to help facilitate the process and promote, right? James Raddick? James Raddick? You're next, sir?
Hello.
James Raddick.
James Raddick. 3822 West 144th Street. First, I got to say, I was very surprised to see Deborah here. I hired her. She was one of the few people I hired when I was working here. So I was really surprised and really happy to see it. I have a couple of questions about the street, 126th Street being one-way. Has anybody ever considered Revilla people? What they going to do? Because if you jump out of your apartment, jump in your car, and you want to go south on Hawthorne, you have to go down, down to 126th, to Broadway and then around. Because my wife, when she goes to the library, she will never try to cross, make a left turn onto El Segundo or any street. She will drive two miles to keep from doing that. So have anybody considered that? Or, somebody's beeping me. Anyway, and the businesses, when they start getting deliveries or their trash pickup, how is this going to affect them? And the one, and the other question I have is, if you go back to the charter deal, can they, can you still use the one that went to the voters before? Was it three years ago? And can you just modify that one and not go through a whole big process to meetings and things like that? That's all. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Raddick. The little beeping sound from people's phones was an amber alert, just so we know. Yeah, so it's just so people listening on cable just know that it wasn't just somebody that didn't turn off their phone or something like that, right? It wasn't Ronnie again. All right. Anybody else wish you to address the council? Please line up.
Hello, everyone. Name's Gordon Michael Migo, native resident of Hawthorne since October the 8th, 1952. First off, I wanted to say, I was really wowed by the presentation for the digital billboards, you know, for, you know, city of Hawthorne. I think you definitely need to improve, you know, to improve that. Looks good all the way around. Getting to item number 15, the Civic Center revamp proposal. After speaking with residents, business owners, and other people in the community, they have made it clear that they, they don't really like either the Nakano or the Office Untitled Presentations for the New City Hall as well as other aspects of the proposal, changes for the surrounding area. Recently, I have provided a copy of a drawing for the revitalization of the Civic Center, mayor, council members, city manager, the planning department, Greg McLean, as well as others. And the consensus of the majority of folks in the community is that if new city hall is built, it should be constructed along Hawthorne Boulevard in the parking lot next to Bank of America. With a grand ornate design, it would make Hawthorne the shining city on the hill in the South Bay region. Also, it would spark revitalization of the mall for shopping, dining, theaters, and so on. That would, place would be renamed the Hawthorne Renaissance Plaza Hawthorne to designate the city Renaissance, rebirth, renewal, and plaza that which it was. And then getting to items one and nine, RE 126th Street. It is vital roadway in the downtown area and really must remain a two-way street that provides convenience and efficiency of travel for residents, business people, visitors, and so on. The proposal for the one-way street with diagonal parking is a terrible idea that must be rejected. Now, if there was a way to, let's say, widen 126th Street and have double diagonal parking on both sides, I think that would be fantastic if you guys can come up with a way with that. But, you know, really, 126th Street is just too darn small to be tinkering with that. If it's not broke, you know, as they say, why, you know, try to fix it or do something else with it. Yeah, I wanted to say in regards to the Charter City Amendment, I was very much supportive of it previously, and I loved our attorney, Robert Ken's presentation. He outlined it very well, and I think it should be brought up for, you know, voters' approval, and, and I campaigned for it when it was out there before, so.
Sir? We have a representative of Steve Bradford's office.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's good to see everyone tonight. My name is Jasmine Leon Guerrero. I'm from State Senator Stephen Bradford's office. I just wanted to share with the community our tacos and taxes event. We had this last year, and we had an amazing turnout. Actually, our volunteers, out of the goodness of their heart, stayed for a couple hours later just to accommodate our attendees. So we know there's a big need in our district, so we're doing it again this year, and we're extending our hours. So it's going to be on March 9th on Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and it's going to be at the Nacahoca Community Center in Gardena. And we are also partnering with Golden State Opportunity, so they'll be taking the appointments. And in order to receive these services, you need to make an appointment, so you can't show up. And there is no website, but you can call them, and the Golden State Opportunity number And you will also need to have an income of under $67,000, so that's a requirement too. And again, there will be tacos. So I know Mayor Protem, you have an event, a taco, I mean, I'm sorry, a taxes event from March to April, so congratulations to you for that. But, but if the members want to, or if the constituents do want to have another option and have some tacos along the way, feel free to come to our event. So again, thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. If somebody else is going to be speaking before the council, we need you to form a line. Okay, so I have one person then. That's, we'll end after that. Are you speaking, ma'am? I need you to line up, please. Yes, I just need to make sure we know how many people. A little slower, though. You good?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council Members, City Staff, and Neighbors. Two things very quickly. I wanted to mention again that VVA Chapter 53, Vietnam Veterans of America, South Bay 53, is putting up our annual scholarship essay program. There are flyers out on the table in the hallway and also right after you go through the doors into the main atrium there, immediately on the right inside the door. These are $1,000 cash scholarships. They are open to any graduating high school senior this year from any of the South Bay High Schools. The information is in the Guidance Counselor's Office from each of the schools, but in case you have a family member who attends any of the South Bay High Schools and they would like to do an essay and have a chance for a $1,000 cash scholarship, we're giving five of them. Also, if you don't know a Vietnam veteran to speak to, to do the interview for, and then write your essay, it would be a great idea for everybody to show up at the Hawthorne VFW this Sunday. They do a terrific breakfast on the third Sunday of every month. Food is excellent. We'll be there with the Veterans Commissions talking about the banner program, and you would also be able to be introduced to Vietnam veterans that you could interview. And then one last thing is, there's a lot of fraud going on in the veteran space these days with companies that are advertising about Camp Lejeune and everything else, and they're saying basically that they can represent you and help you get your veterans' benefits through. And these are paid companies, and a lot of them are fraudulent. So we put together a flyer. Again, it's out on the table, and it's in the veterans' slot right inside the door about the rules and regulations dealing with how you get your benefits taken care of and how you can avoid a claim shark that will end up taking the majority of your money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you so much. We're representing the neighbors on Wilkie Avenue, and we've been in contact with our wonderful City Councilwoman Katrina Manning, and I just want to give her her props. We're going to be speaking to someone regarding the 118, 1-8 property afterwards, but her follow-up with our concerns, voicing our concerns. We just want to thank you so much in front of your peers for doing a great job and listening to us.
Thank you.
Okay. I just would have liked a little more context as to what the issue was, but we'll find out soon, okay? Congratulations. Thanks for helping out. All right, anybody else? If there's no one further, oral communication is closed, so ordered. Consent calendars, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have six items on the consent calendar. There are items 6 through 11 for your consideration and approval. Item 6, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item 7, City Treasurer requests approval of the warrants for February 13th, 2024. Item 8, Resolution Number 8449, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California approving a $50 per meeting compensation for the Commissioners of Youth, Civil Service, Veterans Affairs, Senior Citizens, Planning and Park Recreation Commissions. Item 9, Resolution Number 8450, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California establishing a one-way street on West 126th Street from Hawthorne Boulevard to Grevillea Avenue, establish an angled on-street parking on the south side of West 126th Street from Hawthorne Boulevard to Grevillea Avenue, and designate in 34 spaces as a preferential parking district. Item 10, Resolution Number 8451, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California approving the Municipal Message Centers Development and Lease Agreement between the City of Hawthorne and Wild Media Incorporated. Item 11, Resolution Number 8452, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California approving a side letter agreement between the City of Hawthorne and the Hawthorne Executive Group, HEG, amending the Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, for July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024, and amending Chapter 2.32 of the Hawthorne Municipal Code authorizing the city manager to execute the side letter agreement for adoption.
I move on all items? Please vote.
One second.
How do we do this again?
One second.
I think she's going to activate it.
We have a new system for most that are saying what's going on.
Everyone, please vote. Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
We need a little quiet in the chambers, please. Okay, thank you. Ordinances, please, ma'am.
Item 12, ordinance number 2248, second reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California establishing regulations and requirements for municipal message center network, amending the Hawthorne Municipal Code regarding the same, and making a finding of exemption from SEQA in connection therewith for adoption.
I move? Please vote. System works, it's just that, you know, it just needed to be primed up a little bit. Please vote.
The votes are in.
Is, ma'am, is there a way?
Voting reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Is there a way of leaving the screen up, or does it just default? It closes out? Okay. Awesome. We'll figure it out. City Manager's Consent Calendar?
It is another order.
Did I skip? 13. You did one. I'm sorry, I thought you did both.
Ordinance number 2250, second reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California setting the compensation of the mayor and council members commencing January 1st, 2025, and making a finding of exemption in compliance with SEQA in connection therewith for adoption.
I move.
Second. Please vote.
The voting reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we're ready for the City Manager's Consent Calendar. You have items 14 through 19. Madam Clerk, can you read them on behalf of the City Manager?
Item 14, progress payment number three in the amount of $308,629 due to GRB Con, Inc. of Baldwin Park, California for sewer main and miscellaneous storm drain improvement. Project 2023, project number 23-04. Item 15, allocation of the RPUSD Technical Assistant Program Fund for the City Hall Expansion and Civic Park Project. Item 16, progress payment number one in the amount of $574,859.47 due to Classic Engineering and Construction, Inc. of Orange, California for Hawthorne Housing Rehabilitation of City-owned Properties 2023, project number 23-09. Item 17, agreement of purchase order between the City of Hawthorne and On Power Industries for Emergency Generator Rewire Services. Item 18, agreement of purchase order between the City of Hawthorne and MC Electrical, Inc. and S&amp;S Power Engineering, Inc. for data center power system upgrades. Item 19, approve an agreement between the Hawthorne Police Department and Brink Drones for a five-year contract for Drone First Responder, DFR, in the amount of $503,750, and approve of blanket purchase order not to exceed $61,750 to Brink Drones for the first year of Brink contract services. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the City Manager's Consent Calendar. May I have a motion to approve items 14 through 19?
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
The votes are in. The voting reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
City Attorney's Consent Calendar. Madam Clerk, can you read item 20 on behalf of the City Attorney?
Item 20, claim for damages from Terrence Marshall. Recommended motion, deny the claim of Terrence Marshall. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the City Attorney's Consent Calendar. May I have a motion to approve item 20?
I move.
Second.
The second will be given to Councilmember Patterson.
Perfect. The votes are in. The voting reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Action discussion items, Autism Awareness Month mark. Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you recall, this, the lady Dalbra Sturdvein came here twice about doing autism walk during the month of April. So I decided to try to help her with blessing with Vaughn and the Community Service Department. I was watching the online, the date, the first time she came, all of you agree that it was a good idea. So tentative date is April 6th, and we're going to have a meeting Thursday to begin planning all the logistics, and I just want the blessing of all of you so it can be like a city sponsor project.
I have a question before we proceed. Okay, so I've had a lot of other nonprofits that have approached me, and sometimes they ask for similar types of support to have events, for city money and different things. We have a large amount of nonprofits. We're probably one of the hot, the city in the South Bay that has the highest number of nonprofits. So are we going to begin to support all the rest of the nonprofits that come before us? I think a litmus test of our being able to support anybody in the future now or in the future is, how active have they been in the Hawthorne community as a nonprofit? Is this the first time they want to just simply have an event? How does this specific group distinguish itself from all the other nonprofits that have approached us? I mean, it's a valid question, especially if we're going to be using city money. And I have already had a couple of other nonprofits that have called me up, and then what about me? You told me we couldn't. Okay, so could you please respond?
Well, the reason that I decided to help the young lady is because during that meeting that she first came to present, all of you agree that it was a good idea to help her out doing the autism. Since I have done, you know, the 5K walk for about, you know, 20 years and also the Relay for Life, so I... the Relay for Life, so I, I just thought maybe to give her a, a hand because she didn't know what to do. So, and I don't think it's gonna cost us a lot of money, uh, because we don't plan to do it on the street, uh, because like I said, the logistics is gonna be, uh, planned Thursday, and we're gonna be doing it at the Memorial Park through the Dory, uh, the Dory and, um, Betty Enzwood. So I don't think it's gonna be a lot expensive from the city. Uh, and this is just to do, uh, awareness for autism, right? Because there is a, a big organization, the Autism Foundation, that goes to different cities to promote, uh, awareness about autism, right? Because this is to challenge kids, uh, and most of, most of them are, are in our public schools, right? So it's just an awareness day about autism, so it's, it's not about money. So I don't think the city is gonna be spending a lot of money on this event.
Right, so, I mean, I, I, that didn't answer my question. I already have two other people, two other groups that asked me, um, if, why, we, why we turned them away. So, 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 uh, are we going to be supporting all the nonprofits that come up?
So let me respond to that, Mister Mayor. So if any nonprofit wants to do a project in the city, they can come to the city and present their proposal, and then we will vote ye or nay. So this is like, uh, it's an autism program, and I went out of your own saying, yes, we will help you, uh, talk to the city manager. I saw, and that thing is on tape. I can just go get it, uh, and play it. So what I'm asking is, let's vote on it. If you wanna do it, let's do it. If you don't, give me three vote no, or three, or three vote yes. That's, that's, and then any nonprofit can come here and request any event, and then we'll decide, is it benefit the city, the residents? It's, I'm all for it. Because you know me, I've been running nonprofit for twenty-five years in the city, so.
No, I mean, that's fine, of, of course I'm gonna support this, but then we just also have to, we're gonna have, uh, uh, other groups that are gonna come before us, and, uh, we don't know what level of support they're gonna be asking for, and so we just, we just have to have some type of criteria in the future, too. So I'm willing to support this, of course. Do it, Chair.
Sir. I, I think that's a good subject to bring up another time to discuss, uh, criteria for support. But, uh, I, I, I support this and provide it that certain things happen, which I'm sure will happen. One, it doesn't cost the city a lot of money, and, and council member has a history of hosting events that don't cost the city much or any money, and that it is not overly taxing to staff, right? We, you know, have a lot of different things that, that the city puts together and that require staff's attention. Um, I'm not sure what the date is of this particular event, and I, I don't manage the calendar, so we just provided that it's not overtaxing the staff as far as the timing of it, doesn't cost the city a lot of money, I'm in full support.
Councilwoman.
So, um, I support this event. I've already given her money. I've already told her that I would sign up, whatever she needs. Um, I support it, and if you need, I can give another couple of dollars more to support her event, just maybe three more dollars, um, to support the event, but I support it.
Awesome.
To the Chair. Um, the mayor makes a good point, right? Yeah, he makes a good point, because I spoke to her myself, and I said, come with the plan, come with your details of what this looks like and how, you know, you want to partner with the city and what's our role. I didn't hear back from her, I don't have any more information, so... And then when we talk about a list of our nonprofit organizations that we're supporting throughout the years, um, it sounds like this is another event that we need to put on the books so that we could be able to give, because although she gave, she's not on the books as, as a nonprofit organization that we're supporting, as we all made policy on some years ago.
Yeah.
And we've modified that at the beginning of, I think, twenty twenty?
Yeah, oh, well, no.
Or recently? We made a modification to, to strike out those that are no longer, we're no longer doing, and adding new ones, so, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's redundant what we have. We, there needs to be a fairness, is what I'm saying, across the board for everybody.
Uh, the Chair, let me respond, please.
The notes, I'll go next.
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you. All your, all your points are valid, because, because I know, you know, I'm the one who was screaming and yelling not to do too many events, so, okay? But she did send me, uh, a small proposal. She did, she did submit a proposal, uh, what she intend to do. Uh, I forwarded-
You suppose she shared it?
I forwarded to Vaughn-
Okay.
And I forwarded it to the Kiwanah, the community service, and that's what we're going to sit down on Thursday morning, and we're going to talk about, uh, all the logistics, and then I'll bring you guys more information, but like I said, I don't believe this is going to cost the city a lot of money. Uh, it might be just maybe, uh, uh, you know, uh, some staff time, yes, I'm not going to deny that, but again, we need to think about, this is, is autism, is a cause that affects millions and millions of children all across the United States, and if we want to be the city of good neighbors, this is one of the things that if, if I have to go scramble for money, I will do that, because it's to help do education and awareness about autism that impact a lot of families, and some of those families is on our school district, and we have five school districts in this city. So, uh, all your point is valid, but this is a cause that I think that as a city, as a resident, and been on the school board for twelve years before, I would not let it pass. So that, that's my goal. Thank you.
We're not denying the fact that this has to do with autism and there's a need, that's not the point. You know, I have a Down Syndrome brother, is there, you know, are we having a, folks coming up here asking for Down Syndrome event awareness? All I'm saying is, we're all aware of how important autism is, just like any health, uh, need that we have in our community, our families, et cetera. We're talking about the policies and procedures that we put in place to follow so that we didn't have to fall into this predicament, exactly what we're going through right now.
Um, and, uh, it would have been different if the lady said, hey, I have this need and this specific amount, if you guys could help me. That still needs to be determined, so there's just a lot of question marks, and, uh, over the history of my being up here as a council member, there's been a multitude of people representing nonprofits that have come over here and presented what they do and letting us know that they're present in the community. Nobody up here has pipped a squeak to say, hey, let's support that cause, so are we going to be selective in which causes we, we're gonna support? That hasn't happened before. Maybe some, something she ingratiated herself with the council very, you know, uh, something just connected with you, but what about all the other nonprofits? The reality is, I don't know, uh, okay, if a nonprofit comes up here, we don't know how long they've been in existence, we don't know how effective they are, we don't know what their track record is, we don't know what their financials are, et cetera, that, it would justify us getting involved and supporting them. So, uh, of course, we're all gonna support this, see how this goes, this specific one, but I think we need to be, we have to have a criteria if we're going to repeat this again.
To the Chair. So I'll go ahead and, and direct, uh, our city manager to create a criteria for moving forward so that we could vet the nonprofits organization so that we don't fall into this again.
I have people, know people that are impacted by autism, so this is not like, it doesn't hit my heart, but at the same time, you know?
No, I agree.
Sir.
Mister Mayor, let me, let me say something, because, uh, like I said, again, it is all good, but I could have come here and say, as a council member, I wanna do an autism walk. Who, who can stop me? Like you can do your, your jump fest, you can do your music on the park, aha, don't go there, because then I can say, I'll put a, a foot, you know, somewhere, and I said, I wanna do an autism walk, and who, who can stop me? So, yeah, yeah, just don't go there, because, because you guys been, been spending some money, you know, even do not even show up to organize or plan a D event, just giving stuff, stuff hot time, like on a, on a, on a minute notice, oh, I wanna do this next week, and then they scramble. So don't go there, please.
Uh, Mister-
Mister Mayor, if I can-
No, no, just, I'm gonna respond, because that was directed at me, your proper response is always, I think we all established that we're all gonna vote for this and support this, we just need to have a criteria moving forward. Um, I just wanna remind the community that Councilmember Montero's, uh, nonprofit, Monita Gardens Improvement, has been one of the groups that, a nonprofit, has been one of the nonprofits that we have supported faithfully over the many years, so we do not hesitate in supporting nonprofit. That's an example, in a case in point. So, you know, I raise my money for my events, council members up here raise the money for their events, so it's, it's not just, uh, draining the city's money, so, just, that's it, let's-
To the Chair, you mentioned Monita Gardens. Monita Gardens have not got one dime from the city of Hawthorne. All the money that we, all the events that Monita Gardens puts together, I raised the money, and, and yet, believe me, forty thousand dollars for the, for the, uh, Wolf Fest, we still have leftover money in city coffers. I didn't even keep that money, I gave it to the city. So don't go there either.
I don't know how, uh, saying that we're gonna support this thing turns into this, this type of response, but it just doesn't, can we just, would you like to make the motion, sir? Oh, you don't want it anymore?
We don't need to vote, because, because like I said, on Thursday, I'm gonna get all the, the logistics, and then I'll come back and I'll give you a report, but, like, again, it, it is a cause that autism affect children, and you know me, when it comes down to childrens and family, I will put my life on line for them, and I've been doing that for forty years, and I'll continue to do that. If I have to do it all in my own pocket, I'll do it.
Don't we need to vote, though?
It's, it can be brought back.
Okay.
Is it gonna be brought back, or do we need a vote to, to move forward with this?
No, I, I, there's consensus to move forward with it.
Do we have a unanimous consensus on the council?
It sounded that way.
Hit a motion.
I'll second it. I'll be glad to second it, please vote.
Miss Hunter?
Let, it's, it's set up to vote.
Let's go vote.
You could vote, you could vote if you want.
Okay, yes, we can vote, we'll just do it like, all in favor-
I want, I want everybody on the record.
All in favor said aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Voting reflects council and- The mayor and council voting yes.
Everybody said yes, we just wanna make sure, because-
You guys are my witness.
Okay.
All right.
Prove.
Thank you.
Oh, my God.
Oh, my God. Sorry, uh, Miss Hunter, I promise, five words, it's been more than five words.
All right, guys. Councilmember Patterson, item twenty-two.
Uh, thanks, Mister Mayor. We just voted on, uh, ordinance to, uh, update council salaries, consist with S B three twenty-nine. It's gonna bring council's compensation to nineteen hundred dollars a month beginning January twenty twenty-five, and I want to suggest that we update the city treasurer's, city clerk's, um, compensation as well. My suggestion is updating the treasurers from eight hundred dollars a month to twelve hundred dollars a month, and the clerks from eight hundred dollars a month to sixteen hundred dollars a month, and have that begin January twenty twenty-five as well. My suggestion.
Councilmember Patterson, I just want, I'm gonna direct something for the city attorney. Do we have, uh, do we have a state statute that dictates what, uh, the guidelines are for that?
No, with the, with respect to the salary and compensation for city clerk and city treasurer, it, it's up to the vote of the city council.
Okay, so there's nothing guiding us?
That's what the, that's what the government code says.
Oh, that, we have that as an arbitrary decision?
Yes, so I'll bring it back as a resolution.
Is there any feedback on that?
If there's a-
Before we bring it back, because then once, once we bring stuff back, then, then we, you know, if there's-
I second that to bring it back.
Yep.
Right, because you make it the mo, the motion.
Please vote. All in favor to bring it back for, for a vote? Raise your hand.
Isn't it agendized, isn't it just agendized?
Uh...
It's an agendized, right?
We don't technically have to vote for this, there's a consensus, but if you guys would like to vote for it?
Anything could be discussed at the next meeting, so let's just leave it like that. Okay, so, yeah.
Well, thi, this is the bring back of ordinance to vote on, of course, we can discuss that ordinance at that time, and make any changes at that time.
We'll leave it like that, yes.
Okay.
I got you. That's fine.
Can we bring it back, we're discussing?
Now, uh, we could have discussed it now, but since nobody said anything, we're just gonna, if there's a discussion, it would come back when the resolution's on the-
So are we discussing the amount that he suggested?
Anything you wanna discuss with regards to the resolution, whether it's the amount, whether yes or no, just argument for or against, whatever you could wanna discuss.
When we come back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Changes could have been made to whatever was being proposed here today, but if, uh-
We can make changes next time, too.
If, if that's what you'd like to do-
Okay.
Or just fully support it, okay?
Okay.
The elected officials' reports or recommendations, we'll start off with our city treasurer. Ma'am?
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everyone, thank you for coming out. I wanna say congratulations to all the employees nominated for the Good Neighbor Award, and congrats to DJ on his winning. Um, I'm glad to see the return of taxes and tacos, glad to see I'll be there for that. Um, I look forward to that. Um, we had three securities mature in January, so it's nice to see them turn over into some of these higher rates than they were. Um, I'm pleased to see that in conjunction with the community services department that Capitol data silk month tax preparation is gonna be providing tax preparation on Saturdays at the Senior Center, uh, March second through April twentieth. Um, I, I just wanted to bring about that there are many tax, um, support preparation services out there. Uh, VITA is one, and that's the Volunteer Income Tax Association. Um, they offer assistance and provide pre, free tax help for seniors. A A R P also offers free tax help for seniors. Um, Mind Taxes Free dot com is another one that does free tax preparation assistance, and, uh, the taxpayer advocate via the IRS offers taxpayer clinics for individuals who have disputes with the IRS. Um, there is tax help available out there for you, please seek it out, do not be afraid to do your taxes. I know people have tax anxiety, it's that time of year, but please, there's so much help out there, and I just, you know, wanna let everybody, you know, don't feel lost, so when you hear some of these clinics and, you know, the tax events and people offering help, please seek it out. Um, income tax preparation can be costly with a C P A, but I always charge and empower people to take it upon yourself to learn these things yourself, and do not be afraid to do your own taxes sometimes, or at least seek the help, because there's a lot of help out there. The, uh, Los Angeles Public Library also, um, offers help regarding tax assistance, so I just wanted everyone to be alert, and, you know, there are many tax options out there for you, do not be afraid of the IRS. Um, they also offer assistance, but I just wanted to empower everyone, that there's a lot of, uh, help out there and assistance, and thank you for coming out, everyone.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Miss City Clerk?
Hi, I wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight. Uh, wanted to give big kudos to our police department for the drone presentation. Uh, as many of you know, I am an FAA licensed drone pilot as well, and I absolutely am blown away by the things that we'll be able to do, uh, with the new technologies flying beyond the visual line of sight. Um, I wanna also congratulate everyone who was nominated for a Good Neighbor Award, and thank our winner DJ. Um, everybody here worked so hard, and, uh, really excited to see that everyone came out. Um, and, uh, wanna thank Councilmember Patterson for our Valentine's Day rose today.
Ah, man.
Uh, also, uh, thanks to our city manager who had a fantastic tour, who gave us all a fantastic tour of Dodger Stadium. Uh, it was a great day of training and collaborating and bonding, um, and thanks to all of our council members here, you all do a fantastic job, Montero, um, Mayor Protim, Mayor, Councilmember Patterson, and also, um, the, uh, the Business Expo that is coming up soon. Uh, I am happy to be helping with that and providing volunteers and assisting Councilwoman Manning with the things that she needs with that, and thanks, everyone.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Manning, please.
I too say thank you, David, for thinking of, of some Valentine's Day. I'm a huge advocate of collecting flowers, so you just got on my good side.
And where's my flower?
And where's my flower? Congratulations to, um, all of the, um, nominees for the award. Um, I just wanted to send a special shout-out, uh, to Debbie, who has been helping me, uh, for many, many years, and she's just so quiet. Um, but I just want her to know that I appreciate her and I see her. Um, and, uh, she's been doing great things, so I appreciate her. Want to send a special shout-out. Also, um, I wanted to say that I had an opportunity to welcome, um, our VP Kamala Harris to Los Angeles. Um, it was such an exciting experience. Uh, since I've been a little kid, I've been watching on TV presidents as they come into different, uh, cities. And I actually got a chance to be on the runway and see the airplane, Air Force One, come in, and actually see her walk down and a little chuckle. I reached out to try to touch her and. Secret Service took her down. Grabbed me and I was like, but I'm a city councilwoman. I'm not going to hurt her. They were like, no. So, anyway, it was, it was pretty funny, but I thought I had a right to touch her, so.
I would have caught you in camera.
So, um.
File a complaint there.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I don't, yeah. So, anyway, I also would like to say how much I appreciate our, um, employee retreat at the Dodger Stadium. Um, we had a tour. They fed us. We had opportunity to bond, um, and to learn. And it was such an amazing experience. I've only been there maybe twice. That was my third time. And being able to see the botanical gardens that they have, um, just being there, period. And I just want to say a special shout-out to our city manager, um, and the leadership that he's providing for the city and employees, an opportunity to get out of the city and see other things and see what we can become, um, as we work together and push for it, to collaborate with each other. So, I truly sent out a special shout-out. Thank you. Thank you to your staff. Also, today, we had groundbreaking, um, event for mobility. And I want to send a special shout-out to our public works. We have thirty-two projects, um, in the pipeline that we're working on. And so, to be able to say that as a city, to be able to say that moving forward, I feel very honored to be sitting here today, to be able to say we have thirty-two projects that we're working on. And most importantly, the Civic Center that it's going to be, um, coming up. So, to be a part of that, I'm really truly excited. My heart is completely warm when I think about the things that we've been able to do, um, as a council and our staff. And then I also want to say, if the staff can please stand so that we can give you guys recognition, please stand up, you guys. Come on, stand up.
City manager, city attorney, please stand, Mr. City Attorney and City Manager.
Thank you, guys. Y'all are doing an awesome, awesome job. And we, we truly appreciate you guys because you guys working around the clock to take care of us and all of our events, but also to do the work that you're doing. It takes commitment, dedication to be able to do those things. And so, you guys love us like we're family, and we appreciate you guys. So, please know, we love you. We appreciate you. And then, lastly, want to talk about the Business Expo, March fourteenth. Job Fair, March fourteenth, all happening in the same day. Please, whatever you do, show up. Show up to our Job Fair. We have, uh, businesses like McDonald's and Cal State Dominguez, uh, Amazon, BMO, Microsoft. The City of Hawthorne is looking to hire as well. They'll have tables. Make sure you show up March fourteenth to the Job Fair from three PM to seven PM. You don't want to miss out. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Councilmember Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to first thank the community for coming out and participating in the process, uh, participating in public comment, making your voices heard, and just being here to collect information about what's happening, uh, in your community. Uh, I want to thank our staff, all of your hard work and your dedication to your city. Um, and make sure, you know, I got a nice place to live. Appreciate it. And, uh, as well as our police department, who seem to get all the coolest toys. Um, I, I'm excited for, you know, what's next and your ability to make sure you continue to keep us safe. Um, and so, yeah, you know, you know, thanks for, just for all of your contributions to our city. Want to give a shout-out to those that were nominated in our Good Neighbors Awards, as well as DJ who won. Uh, we have DJ who won. We have Debbie, and we have Ron. Uh, you know, hearing your stories is very just inspiring, really made me smile. Uh, it's, um, not everybody comes to work interested in working. And, uh, it's great that we have so many, uh, members of our, our city that, that really are interested in contributing and making an impact. So, definitely appreciate you all. Uh, I want to thank the city attorney for providing his presentation about the charter. Um, also setting up a conversation I had with Richard Rochan and Gresham about charters and stuff like that. And, and it really prompted, prompted me to want to request from the city manager to find a, um, we, we, we have the foundation of what's legal or not legal and all that stuff, but we have maybe like a subject ma, subject matter expert on, um, how charters are implemented, um, effectively or successfully in different cities. We have a few different cities that, that are charters, like Redondo Beach, Inglewood, Carson, bunch of other ones in the, in the area. You know, that can maybe kind of, um, you know, put in plain language about, hey, this is, you know, how we could utilize X, Y, Z provision to help in maybe economic development or streamline things or whatever the case might be. And even with that, um, consistent with Mr. Raddick said, uh, I think if we do come up with a, a charter that the council may decide to put on a ballot, I think it's a good idea to take the one that we had crafted previously and, and just make some adjustments to. And I think it may be a big good idea in a, in a, in a sense of, um, in the name of efficiency and time, maybe putting together like an ad hoc committee to, like we did with the cannabis ordinance, to kind of kick around some different ideas or concepts or, or parts to include and then present to the council. The council's going to have an opinion about it. Uh, you know, my thoughts are a couple of council members. Uh, somebody from the HMEA, somebody from the HPOA, and, and whatever subject matter expert that we can dig up that, that really knows how charters help cities. And, um, outside of that, um, definitely looking forward to the, uh, Business Expo. Um, and, uh, uh, as well as the Job Fair, I think that was a great idea that, that was added to it. Um, looking forward to, um, I know we're about to come into a season of a lot of good community events. Um, and so, I'm looking forward to those. One of the things I like about our city is that our community gets really involved and comes out and participates and get opportunity to kind of meet people and get a sense of them. So, um, great to see everybody and, uh, see you guys in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, let me apologize to you because I raised my voice. You know, you know, when it comes to children, I'm very passionate about it, so I apologize.
Yeah, I, I didn't cry that much, but it's okay.
So, uh, again, you know, I, I want to say thank you to all of you that have been here and at home, uh, listen to us. Uh, all very good presentation today. Um, I'm very proud of our city, uh, that we are moving forward. Uh, you know, so from, uh, from the, um, the billboards to the, uh, our street improvement that we're trying to do right here on, on one, one hundred twenty-six, that we tried to do a pilot program. So, all these presentations was fantastic, and I want to say thank you, thank you. Again, I want to echo the sentiment from, uh, Councilwoman Katrina Manning uh, about, uh, the staff development that we had at the Dodger Stadium. It was well done. Uh, talk about, you know, um, work culture, right? About, uh, how, how the council see the staff and how the staff see us. So, it was a dialogue, uh, among ourselves. Uh, how can we improve our communication? Uh, one culture right here at City Hall and the police department, all the departments, so. Um, and I had to tell, you know, one of the things that I told them is about happiness. Staff have to be happy because you have to come to work, you have to like what you do. Uh, and then again, it's like that Good Neighbor Award, right? When you see Debbie and, and DJ and Mr. Lewis over there, you know, working, um, every day, coming to work. And they spend more time at work than at home, right? Uh, because when they go home, they spend a few hours and then they go to bed, and then they have to wake up and come after work. So, we have to make sure that we take care of our people. Because like we said, it's a family. It's a, it's a culture of family, and we need to take care of them. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, uh, Vaughn, uh, for being a leader, uh, that I envisioned that. Uh, so, I'm very pleased with the work that you have built. You have created a culture, a, a, a team that is going to move Hawthorne forward. And I, and I'm looking forward to that. So, thank you very much. I want to say, you know, uh, a few days ago was the, uh, the, the new, the Lunar New Year, you know, the Year of the Dragon. And also, this month is the Black History Month. So, maybe on the twenty-seventh, uh, I might have a presentation that I want to bring somebody from the community, uh, to, uh, give them a proclamation for all the work they have been doing, uh, in the community. So, it's, uh, it might be an African-American gentleman, but I haven't got the bio yet, but, uh, I want to make sure that we celebrate the Black History Month. Um, the groundbreaking today, you know, again, uh, like I told them this morning, I've been driving around in a lot of different cities, almost fourteen cities and different, uh, non-incorporated areas. And we have the best streets in this South Bay and around this area. Uh, because I saw so much pothole somewhere else, and our city is pretty good. So, it's thanks to the public works and the leadership again that keep applying for grants. And that is what you guys don't understand. This is not the free money. We have to apply for grants. Staff have to take time. The public work has to take time to sit down and write those grants, write those proposals, and send it to the county, send it to the state, send it to the feds for us to get the money. And imagine we got millions of dollar that we can be able to do all these thirty-two projects, and only four percent of that budget is coming from our general funds. Ninety-six percent is all grant money. So, it, that is a tremendous achievement from our public work. So, thank you again for all you guys do. Um, I want to wish everybody a happy Valentine tomorrow. Uh, and, um, and I want to ask Mr. Mayor actually to adjourn this meeting on three, uh, souls that we lost to heaven, right? One of them, we were there, uh, Chantelle Lamore, that was the, the wife of Pastor Curtis. Uh, Bill Brand, the mayor of Redondo Beach, who passed away this weekend. And one of our old employees from Parks and Recs, Tom Moreman, died this morning. He used to be, uh, at the Parks and Recs for many, many years. So, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so let's make sure, uh, we say everything that we need to cover and there's no go-backs, so let's just.
Oh, and no go-backs.
Okay.
Make something up. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, we've done a lot, uh, for February. I mean, there's a, a lot of things that I don't want to duplicate up here. I, I, I want to be just quick about it. The Job Fair, that's awesome on the fourteenth. All of these other, especially Katrina Manning's Hawthorne Business Expo. Look forward to that. Uh, we had a groundbreaking this morning on Birch and, uh, one twenty-six. And, uh, um, members that attended and were there, uh, that was a great turnout. Thank you, Public Works and the departments that, uh, again, do the, um, grants to be able to do that. And we have so many more coming up in our city, including another groundbreaking on February twenty-seventh, um, on Minlo Avenue. There's also, um, an upcoming, uh, golf terminate, uh, terminate tournament that I want to, um, mention Hawthorne Wrecking Parks Foundation, the Thirty Thirty Annual Golf Tournament on Monday, March eighteenth. I want to make sure we say that to those golfers that play golf. Uh, thank you for the employee training on yesterday. Uh, culture, community, and collaboration. And that's the efforts that we're trying to make here as a council, but more importantly, as a team, family unit in the city. And, um, I'm excited for that, and it was great to see everybody on board and everyone enjoying their time, um, at, at the Dodgers. It was a great, um, outing. Appreciate that. Uh, Hawthorne, uh, we have a bunny, Bonanza coming up on Saturday, March twenty-third. Um, can I just make some requests for potholes, um, across, on ocean, on ocean, at Ocean Gate, across the street at the gas station that's there next to T, is it T-Mobile? I think it's T-Mobile. Uh, there's, there's some potholes there right across the street from Ocean Gate. I, I don't know whether or not that was county or city. But I know our, our city's going to help however they can in spite of it being the county, if it is. Uh, thank you for all the, all the presentations that were made today. Uh, look forward to seeing the pilot project, uh, on, um, you know, including additional parking spaces, spaces and using, uh, one twenty-six here right outside, uh, council chambers for, uh, that pilot project. And if it's successful, I, I don't mind looking at other areas of the city to implement that. And I can't say enough how the T-parking and everything else that we've implemented as a pilot project and ultimately took off, how suc, how successful that's been. So, thank you to that. Um, tomorrow's my first meeting, um, as an appointed LA County Commissioner to LAFCO. Um, LAFCO, um, basically is the overseer of all changes of local government boundaries. So, if there's new cities, communities, annexations, things like this, um, uh, it's going to be a first meeting tomorrow at, um, uh, the Board of Supervisors chambers. And I look forward to that and look forward to talking more with the council. And thank you, Greg, for sitting in the meeting with me on the briefing. And, um, we, we learned a lot. And it's good to know that the City of Hawthorne has a seat at the table when it comes to these types of efforts, and we need more of it for, because for far too long, city's been left behind. So, I'm just glad to know that, um, you know, we're stepping up and our leadership rose and taking on other meetings that sometimes last, believe it or not, five hours, six hours, seven hours. People are thinking, you know, you just come and sit here? No. We sit in other commission meetings and hearings and et cetera, et cetera, that can last up to five, six, seven hours. And this includes Clean Power Alliance. This sometimes includes, um, Metro Southport Sector Board with regards to Metro. Um, so, there's a lot of other committees and commission, commissions that, um, we participate in. And, um, not to mention just putting together the Business Expo, you know, lots of hours, lots of hands. And we couldn't do it without the support of our city manager, our city attorney, and department heads that make us shine and, and in turn make our city shine. The City of Hawthorne is better for it, and we've done so much to improve not just, um, our community and in our walking and, and our public safety with regards to, uh, street scape and cars and things like this, pedestrian walkways, ADA compliance, all of it. And so, um, just want to thank you all and Mayor for such a good meeting today and look forward to seeing what, um, this billboard looks like. Hint. But, yeah, look forward to that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Everybody good? Okay, thank you. Um, I heard that it was a successful employee retreat, so I'm glad for those who organized it, um, that were able to attend. It was held at Dodger Stadium. Of course, in such an atmosphere, you know, where our Dodgers have won their world championships, their World Series, and just being in the, in the presence of greatness right there, I think inspired probably our, our city employees to just continue working as a team, much like the Dodgers have, right? So, it was an inspirational probably. So it was an inspirational location to have it at. She's, she's spugging me over here, so. The employee recognition, I want to congratulate and give kudos to the nominees and DJ for obtaining that, that top award. But every single one of those employees have contributed. We see them, we see them all around the city, working hard and just literally working hard. I'm impressed by the dedication and going beyond what's, what's in their job description. You know, many people say, you know, usually have people, oh, no, it's not a part of my job description. Oh, no, it's part of, it's not part of the MOU. But some people just go at the extra length to be able to help the city and its residents with anything they need. So we want to, I want to thank them again. I do want to agree with my council colleagues on the condition of our streets. The condition of our streets is definitely top-notch. There is a measure, Selena, what's the measure of the quality of the status of the streets? Because I know there's just a measure of it. Do you know what the name is? What is it? BQI? BQ, PQI? That, obviously that means something. There's some data, but that's data that's collected that tells you like the number of potholes, you know, how big they are, you know, how they've been repaired, et cetera. We're in the South Bay from the last time I remember, we're the, the, we have the highest PQI in the South Bay. That's, that's correct, right? So that's something that we feel proud of. You go through torrents, I'm sorry. You know, you, you have these potholes that are like, what the heck, man? I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to put a claim in with the mayor over there, you know? My car is getting. But we have great streets and we have a great Public Works Department. So kudos to the Public Works Department. I also want to thank our staff for everything they have done. Like I said, we, the employee recognition was proof of that. And our city manager and our city attorney for the great job they do in being able to just create this machine that we have to get things done, to take us to the next level. I've always commented that there was a period after like, you know, the history that we've had with our elected officials here that brought us to a low point when it came to the economics, the financials, you know, overspending, you know, wasteful spending, chaos, scandal, all that. You know, but we've had a great city manager that has taken us, increased our cash reserves to a point where, you know, we're in a comfortable situation, economically successful. You know, with hopefully you're, you acknowledge that yours truly and your council up here has done a good job and has been partic- part of that as well. So thank you, Mr. City Manager and our city attorney, which I, I always consider, I'm telling him that you're like, like a bulldog in action. I like you look like one, okay? That you're a bulldog when it comes to. Because do I look like one? No, no. No, but that he's like a bulldog in protecting the city and going on the offense when it's, somebody has slighted the city and, you know, we just need to make sure that they are, are held responsible for things they've done with, with the city and being able to protect us from any legal thing that, you know, we know we're not deserving. So thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for keeping that city attorney's department in a great state. Feedback for our, our Veterans Commission on the banner. In the process of assembling all the information for my dad's, for my dad's banner, right? I got everything lined up. But I found out that there's four components to that. I think that we have to kind of think about, because I know, let's, let's turn it into the HR department. Let's turn it into the HR department. But we have an application which could be PDFed, can be scanned. We have the discharge papers that could be scanned, right? But then we also have the picture component, which is a JPEG. You know, we have to, you can't hand a paper copy of a, or like a PDF. So we got, we can email those things in. But then we have the check component, which is a physical component. I mean, we could make copies of the application, the discharge papers. So if Erica could team up with you guys and think of a way that we could maybe, you know, assemble that and just have the structure a little bit. I guess if there's needs to be made, if there needs to be adjustments made to how we turn in that information, if you could please do so. Okay? Do you know what I'm saying? We'll have to email the, the pictures in. I have everything ready to go. I'm ready to send it. Just the, 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 the check part is the one. Okay, all right. Stand by and we'll take care of all that. Attended the Independent Cities Association meeting up in Santa Barbara. We almost got stuck up there in the, in the storm. There was like a storm. Yeah, and there was mudslides over there in Santa Barbara. And like, God, I got up really early on Sunday morning just to get back. And then just a couple hours later, there was all these mudslides that, you know, were happening. I was watching the news and I was already in bed taking a, you know, just a little bit of nap. And so I'm glad I left early. But topics that were discussed were the fentanyl crisis, how to better hire for police, meaning making sure we get the message across and recruit. The drone systems for security for other cities. Our neighboring city, Gardena, has drones. And then we have our drone system. Of course, I wanted to like interrupt and say, but we got like a plane that we're using. But it wasn't, it wasn't my platform. I mean, I didn't want to show off, you know, you know, in front of all these other cities, you know, just let them get their moments of, you know, of fame up there for, while they're on the panel. But we have a really good setup here. Drones and we also have our plane that is up in the sky. Then the emergency dispatch system was highlighted. Our own RCC program was highlighted here as well. So just reporting out to you that that's what's happened. Look, I think we have had a lot of people that have passed away. I know my, one of my classmates from St. Joseph's, you know, passed away. Lady Chantelle Amour passed away, the, the wife of one of our pastors here. Our neighboring city's mayor, Bill Brand, passed away. Tom Momen, who was an employee here. Oh, God, man, there's, you know, a few of my, you know, whatever. I don't even want to just bring you guys down. But it's just tomorrow, in, in Latin American countries, Valentine's Day isn't necessarily all about you and a couple. It's called Dia de la Amistad, right? Dia, it's not called Dia de la Amor, it's not the Day of the Love. It's Day of the Friendship also, so it has a different meaning. So of course, you know, celebrate your loved ones, your loved one. But also it's a moment to just kind of just spend time with your family and just let your parents, let your kids, let your sisters, your brothers and all those people you care about, let them know that you love them and that, you know, that you're thinking about them. Just simplest thing like that. I mean, we should be doing that every day, but if this is a point at which we can have an excuse to do it, I think we should do it. So I'll be spending Valentine's Day with my students at El Camino from, from six to nine. And then I have, I think I might have office hours after and before and after. So I'll be with them, you know, so. And, you know, hopefully maybe I'll bring them something, some treats to eat while we're there, right? So that's what I'll be doing tomorrow. So if, have fun, guys. And I send you all up here, a big hug on my, on the dice right here. You too, Mr. City Manager, you too, Mr. City Attorney. So and everybody out there in the audience. Okay, send you guys a big air hug, okay?
Thank you, Councilmember Patterson, for the rose.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, he's gonna bring us ours, Alex, next week, okay?
I don't like chocolate.
Oh, you want chocolate instead now? It's not a flower anymore. It has to be chocolate. Okay, we would like to adjourn this meeting in honor of Lady Chantelle Amour, Mayor Bill Brand from Redondo Beach and Tom Momen, who was an employee here in our city. Lady Chantelle Amour was the, is the wife of Pastor Curtis Amour. So if you could join, may they all rest in peace. And a moment of silence for them, please. Thank you, guys. This meeting is adjourned at eight forty PM.